I don't know what's like that.
We are hoping, what if that was in the right west, or if that was in...
They need to get moving on it. I mean, you can ask Steve again. I called and asked him if we could postpone it until the next one, but our next one is up for a month.
I'm turning my phone off.
Mike's all those gatherings.
Right. No, I know, but so what I'm saying is, is to add, add a, add a D.
He's starting learning some believing.
That's perfect.
That's good.
We do, we do have some.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to word that.
Call the meeting, meeting to order, Planned Zoning Commission of March 15th, 2012. I'll go through some rules and procedures before we begin. Planned Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans. The commission's decision to approve or deny a site plan is the final decision by the city unless the applicant appeals to the City Council. Please contact the city clerk or community development department staff for details on council hearings. The applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents are then allowed to speak with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. Hearing will be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the issue under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed in the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation and staff report unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodation to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. To better serve you and possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at 515-283-4209 should special accommodations be required. Assistive listening devices are available for meetings in the council chambers. Planned Zoning Commission meetings are broadcast on media cable channel 97.1 or on channel 86, unless that's changed. For digital service customers, broadcast is also streamed live in real time on the City of Des Moines website at www.dmgov.org. Click on "Watch Live" link. Have any discussion about the minutes or all accept a motion?
No.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
Two abstentions?
Not here.
Not here.
Thank you. We have one item that's listed in the Agenda on Consent agenda. However, we've had some discussion about perhaps adding at least a couple more. Item two, we think we can add, the only discussion we've, or difficulty we have with item two is, we want to make sure that there's a neighborhood, another neighborhood meeting prior to the City Council meeting. Apparently, there's one scheduled. If that's the only discussion, we could add that one on. Members of the commission, you okay with that?
Yeah.
No? Okay, we'll hear that one. Another one, item four, which is a request from Wesley Retirement Services, Inc., represented by Shereen Anderson, for an amendment to the Wesley Acres PUD conceptual plan for property located at 3520 Grand Avenue to allow beer and wine sales for onsite consumption as part of the food service for residents as a permitted use to make revisions to the allowed signage program to accommodate new branding and to define the permitted exterior design for a 5,470 square foot adult daycare building addition. Commission, anybody in the audience against that item? Okay, we'll add that one to the consent agenda. And item number six is the other one, which is a request from Waste Management of Iowa, Inc., represented by David Massey, for review and approval of a site plan under Design Guidelines for Gas Stations/Convenience Stores on property located at 201 Southeast 18th Street to allow filling station use with four fueling stations for third-party customers to purchase compressed natural gas, additional subject properties owned by City of Des Moines. Commission, everyone okay with that one?
Mm-hmm.
Anyone in the audience to speak against that item? Okay. Okay, we have a motion to move four and six onto the consent agenda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign?
Did I see, J.D., were you just late or were you opposed?
She was just late.
Okay, okay.
She moved it.
That's what I thought, but then I saw.
She moved four and six onto the consent. Now, we'll take the consent, which is items one, four, and six now. Ted's moving consent. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign? Okay, so we're through with one, four, and six. We'll go on to item number two. Jason, are you presenting?
Yes, sir.
Chair, members of the commission, Jason Van Essen with the city's planning staff. Before I get started, I want to just ask for everybody's patience tonight. We've had a couple illnesses, so I will be trying to jot down motions as they're made, and I think so if you can be patient with me in getting people's names as they speak. The other thing, too, before I start the presentation, our notices went out for the meeting, both the 20-day and 10-day. However, we had, we figured out today that the post office has response cards, or at least we believe they do, that we do not have, so I will not be showing you any response maps. We will have those cards prior to the council hearing for any of those items, so they will be accounted for. They will, with regard to the opposition and supermajority requirements, that is something that we calculate up to the point of the council meeting. It's not something that's said at the P&amp;Z hearing, so there's no problems with that. So anyway, we wanted to cover that, and now we'll go ahead and get started. This is Ariel, showing the larger PUD that the site is a part of. It's proposed to be resoned to a new PUD classification down here in the corner. The current uses allowed for this property are basically the uses allowed in the C1 district except for multifamily residential type uses. So originally envisioned as a commercial node going along with the fairway and the other properties at the intersection here. Highlighted boundary of the city, East Park to the south, East Virginia to the north, 22nd and 28th Court, and then the street. Photograph of the subject property looking to the south and to the west. Just another picture looking more at the north perimeter of the site. And then looking to the south along the east perimeter of the site. Okay, so we got this oriented, so north is up. So the applicant is proposing to construct a assisted living facility. We have the parking to the south, the building pretty much accounting for the bulk of the site, an access area to the north. You can see some of the conceptual landscaping. Landscaping would be looked at in greater detail at the development plan stage. This is just a concept plan. It's kind of beginnings when we go through the PUD zoning process. So here we have the building elevations of the main structure. You can see that consists of hardy plank siding, brick, and other masonry products. One-story building, residential in height. There's also a, oh, I'm not sure. Let's see if you can see. Yeah, I've got everything on there. This is just that wing up in the northwest corner. We are recommending approval of the request. We have a few conditions. Nothing of significance. It seems to be a very straightforward application, nice design, landscaping. It's a use, kind of a transitional use that we would typically look for between residential and commercial development, so it seems to be appropriate to the site. Our recommended conditions are, essentially, I won't read one for verbatim, but basically that trash enclosure. We just want to make sure that it's built to masonry and matches the building. Two is the addition of street trees. There are, within that residential development, there are street trees elsewhere. Also, two, this would help soften views of the property, along with kind of just the other aesthetic value of street trees and environmental improvements that they offer. Three is just a point of clarification, just to make sure that whatever signage they have, the total area, the total number of signs relates to our C1 district, which is what is, from a signage standpoint, is what's already approved for this particular property within the existing PUD. And then the last one is just a clarification note from our engineering staff about just making sure that the actual location of stormwater facilities is identified. Nothing of any significance, so. Be happy to answer any questions. As was noted by the chair, there was a neighborhood meeting, but not, not everyone was made aware of it, so the developers agreed to hold another neighborhood meeting prior to this being heard in front of the city council.
The Neighborhood Association, they're going to be meeting with the Neighborhood Association, but this is an HOA area included in that. Does that affect anything that you are?
You have to forgive me, HOA?
Homeowners Association.
Oh, okay.
That's included in that particular area there.
We were, the city's notice process, I mean, first and foremost, you know, by state law, we notify surrounding property owners, so that's been done. The applicant mailed a letter, a card, to those property owners and the Neighborhood Association in addition, but we don't have any policy that requires homeowner associations to be notified. It's based on property ownership.
The Homeowners Association, from what I have been told, thought that that area was going to be a recreational area, and it's written up in their homeowners association handout or whatever that they were received.
The PUD that's on the books clearly identifies it as a commercial area, has a...
I know, it's zone commercial.
Yeah, a long list of commercial uses, so I'm not sure where the misleading information got presented to, it sounds like some homeowners as they either moved in or had lived there, but...
Yeah, these people that lived there.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jason. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Steve Nieber with Hubble Realty Company, 6900 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa. I'm here tonight to present River Woods Terrace. I have with me Brad Lang of Solom Lang Architects, architect. Peggy Luciano with Senior Housing Management, our management company, and also Doug Salzke, our civil engineer, to answer any questions, too, so. First, this is, as has been stated, a commercial lot. It was first platted and been marketed since 1994, with no success, I might add. We acquired this from the Clark Companies when we acquired their apartment portfolio. We've marketed it then, since that period of time, again, with no success. So with that, we've looked at things that we could put on this site that we thought would be complimentary to the neighborhood, would be a good addition, since commercial clearly wasn't in the cards in our future. So it is Zone C1. Some of the uses that could be put on the site are a tavern, a nightclub, gas station, apartment store, even a mobile home park. So we think this is, even though the PUD currently says no multifamily, we think this is a good use. It's one that, as a highlight, we've actually done some survey and market study with, and has proven out that this is a need in the community, so. What we're proposing is an assisted living project, 60 units with 10 units of memory care. Basically, that's for anyone that has dementia or Alzheimer's. That's a way to state that. So the apartments would be one and two-bedroom. It would be a rental product. The units would be anywhere from 360 to 700 square feet, and we would probably do this in phases. First phase, we think would be the 40 units, and then do the next phase in the 20 units, for the total of 60, so. It's a $10 million investment by Hubble in this neighborhood, not a small investment. It's a big project, and it would create approximately 23 full-time jobs and 16 part-time jobs with a payroll annually of over $1 million. So we think it's a good project. It should help the neighborhood. It's a good investment, and it'll create some jobs. Some of the things that were borne out in the market study, first, we sent it to individuals who are 75 years of age and older. Just for your information, the average assisted living resident is approximately 82 years old, so we think that's the target market. We sent out over 2,000 surveys. We've got a 6% return rate, or 137 responses, and what it indicated was the demand for 80 assisted living units in the area, so we feel comfortable with the 60 that we've programmed in, and we're going to phase that in to kind of mitigate even the risk on that, to go with 40 to start, so. Some of the features and amenities of the project, they'll get free, have the ability to have free home-cooked meals, served restaurant-style in a central dining area if they choose. Housekeeping and personal laundry services are provided, personal emergency call system, registered nurse is available 24 hours a day. Staff will be in the building around the clock. There's a social and recreational activities area, and we have a daily, full-time activities director for the residents. There'll be a therapy room and wellness programs, private dining room for family and guests, homelike family lounge for the residents, a reading room, a TV lounge, onsite barber and beauty salon, convenience store onsite for the residents. If they need some snacks or toiletries or whatnot, it's right there onsite. And we'll have a secure building. It will be a security system for the residents to get in and out, or their visitors. There'll be valet parking and scheduled transportation such as a shuttle bus as we get up and operational, so. Be a lot of amenities. It'd be a typical assisted living community that you've seen probably maybe your parents live in. We did, as was stated, have a neighborhood meeting. Both, we met with the River Woods and Pioneer Park president of their neighborhood groups back in December, just to give them a heads up that this is coming. And also, then, we met with the HOA on the 28th of February and the neighborhood on the 28th of February. So we had two meetings that day, one at 5:30 and one at 7:00. There were some people, as I've been told, that were not able to make some meetings, so we have agreed to go back again on the 27th of March and meet with them as an informational, and try and inform them about the project, so. Don't have a problem with that. We read the staff recommendations. The only point of clarification, I guess, is on the landscaping. There was a note on the street trees. Those would be in and above the C2 zoning, so if we put those in, we don't have a problem putting them in. We just want them to count toward the 50% increase required for the tax abatement, so just a point of clarification, if that makes sense. Does that make sense what I, okay? Any questions?
Any questions for Steve?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Nieber. Tell me, this looks like a monitor roof over the axis of the building. Is that correct?
I'm going to send out an architecture, let my capable architect answer your question, if that's okay.
Talk about the monitor roof, because I'm interested, is it going to light a common space inside a building?
Just for introductions, I'm Brad Lang with Solom Lang Architects. We're addressed at 3226 Center Point Road, northeast Cedar Rapids, Iowa. This is a type of building that we've done kind of over and over. To specifically answer your question, yeah, the building is designed to break down into pods or wings, and then the central core area, which you see...
Oh, look at that.
The central core area, which houses the shared amenities, the ideas that we're trying to push daylighting into those spaces to make them a more enjoyable environment. So the dining and the rec areas and the libraries and all of the amenities are kind of held within, or underneath that big, the area that has the light monitor.
Can I kind of give them a little view of the top floors?
This is, again, a conceptual floor plan that, as you look at the elevations that you've been submitted, this is to the south. This is the front entrance to the facility. Through the core of the building, these are all the shared amenities, and then each of these kind of blue shaded boxes are the wings or the units, each of which have 10 units per wing. And then towards the, towards the north, kind of on a small umbilical cord connection, that's the memory care area, and those tend to be residents that need to have kind of their own special place, so we tend to break those off away from the rest of the assisted living environment, so. And like I said, in the interior core area, again, this is kind of the light monitor. The amenities are the dining, the living. We've got laundry facilities that are available, a C-store or kind of a convenience store component, so you can kind of shop and do things. I might point out, these people are free to come and go. This is a completely independent environment. They, some have cars, most don't, but they're, it's just like living in an apartment, like you or I or anybody else. They kind of come and go as they please, so.
So if we went to Cedar Rapids, we could see an example of this already?
We haven't done one with a light monitor. This, because the facility is, because we're maximizing the site development, this is, we felt that the core area was big enough that it could, that it needed to support some additional daylight. There's also, these courtyards, they're sort of developed intentionally to create these courtyard areas in between the wings, not only for the residents to be able to come out into those neighborhoods, into those outside environments for landscaping, but it also gives you interface along these edges so that there'll be additional daylighting, typical daylighting windows in storefront that gives you, so it should be a very light-filled space is the intent, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? CJ?
I have a question. In one area, it says senior living, and you just explained that people can come and go, and then on the bottom, it says assisted living, and those are two different...
It is assisted living.
It is assisted.
If there's any, yeah, to make it clear, this will be an assisted living project.
Okay, thank you.
Joya?
The meeting that you're going to be having with the Neighborhood Association coming up?
Yes.
Is the homeowners association invited to this, too?
Absolutely.
Okay, I would like to see them invited.
Tim's made me aware of some things that I think we need to make sure that we have them there so that we can answer their questions, because I think they have some questions, maybe outside of this project, but they have some issues that we need to address.
I just want to state, although it's been stated that the notices were sent out to the homeowners association, I can say with a pretty good amount of confidence that that wasn't accurate. They may have gotten lost in the mail or administrative error. Nonetheless, I don't think anybody from the homeowners association received a heads-up on this, thus requiring them to come back and talk to us. So I'm, that's, that's the whole reason pretty much behind getting, you know, getting back behind this, so everybody is in the know and on the same page. I do believe Steve also, talking about the amenities, I think left out a pretty important thing in that, so the memory care unit that will be going along with this. I'll let you go ahead and talk about it. Thanks.
Yeah, you know, it just is another stage of life, obviously, that this facility's able to accommodate and keep people in their home as long as possible. The next stage that you would go to would be a skilled nursing facility and then on, obviously, to a nursing home, but this is truly, it's not independent living, which is a step away from this. This is assisted living, so we offer services. And nationally, if you look at this type of project, the memory care units have not been there, and projects are adding them back in as a feature for a current day project. So this is, this is what the market's asking for, is the memory care attached to the assisted living component, and we're providing it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, we'd like to hear from anybody who's in favor of the project. Please come up. Seeing none, anybody opposed to the project? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or...
I'd like to move staff with Steve Nieber's clarification on the trees.
I would also like to add that I think we need to have some input from the neighborhood on this, and I think that's very critical and vital to a large development like this, and I can't see why they would object to it, but I do think we should at least hear from them in some manner.
Mike, it's your motion. Do you want to add anything about it?
Aren't the groups invited to the meetings, or haven't they been to a meeting?
typical daylighting windows in storefront that gives you, so it should be a very light-filled space is the intent. So, thank you.
Any other questions? CJ?
I have a question. In one area, it says senior living and you just explained that people can come and go. And then on the bottom, it says assisted living. And those are two different?
It is assisted living.
It is assisted.
If there's any, yeah, to make it clear. This will be an assisted living project.
Okay, thank you.
Joanne?
The meeting that you're going to be having with the Neighborhood Association coming up?
Yes.
Is the homeowners association invited to this too?
Absolutely.
Okay, I would like to see them invited.
Tim's made me aware of some things that I think we need to make sure that we have them there so that we can answer their questions, because I think they have some questions, maybe outside of this project, but they have some issues that we need to address.
I just want to state, although it's been stated that the notices were sent out to the homeowners association, I can say with a pretty good amount of confidence that that wasn't accurate. They may have gotten lost in the mail or administrative error. Nonetheless, I don't think anybody from the homeowners association received a heads-up on this, thus requiring them to come back and talk to us. So, I'm, that's their whole reason pretty much behind getting, you know, getting back behind this so everybody is in the know and on the same page. I do believe Steve also, talking about the amenities, I think left out a pretty important thing in that, so the memory care unit that'll be going along with this. I'll let you go ahead and talk about it. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, it just is another stage of life, obviously, that this facility's able to accommodate and keep people in their home as long as possible. The next stage that you would go to would be a skilled nursing facility and then on, obviously, to a nursing home. But this is truly, it's not independent living, which is a step away from this. This is assisted living. So, we offer services. And nationally, if you look at this type of project, the memory care units have not been there and projects are adding them back in as a feature for a current day project. So, this is, this is what the market's asking for, is the memory care attached to the assisted living component, and we're providing it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, we'd like to hear from anybody who's in favor of the project. Please come up. Seeing none, anybody opposed to the project? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or?
I'd like to move staff with Steve Niebuhr's clarification on the trees.
I would also like to add that I think we need to have some input from the neighborhood on this, and I think that's very critical and vital to a large development like this. And I can't see why they would object to it, but I do think we should at least hear from them in some manner.
Mike, it's your motion. Do you want to add anything about it?
Aren't the groups invited to the meetings or haven't they been to a meeting? What did I miss?
I am the president of that neighborhood association proper. I will be abstaining from this vote. However, until our neighborhood meets again with Mr. Niebuhr, I will represent the neighborhood association with denial or support at the council meeting.
Is the neighborhood group meeting prior to the council meeting?
Yes.
I don't see what the issue is. I'm missing something here.
We are having another meeting to discuss, we had a meeting, but a lot of the homeowners did not get the notice that there was going to be a meeting. So, after the fact, a lot of people are wondering what's going on. So, we asked them to come back and re-present their concept after we make sure everybody involved has an invitation.
So, added to my motion is that the applicant's going to meet with the association prior to city council.
Perfect.
Fine.
Can we add the homeowners association to that?
That the homeowners association also be invited to that same meeting. Fine.
Can I ask a question? What's the difference?
The homeowners association has to do with the neighbors that are east of 22nd Street and north of Park Avenue. That development in there is within a homeowners association. The neighborhood association includes those people plus, I'm not sure what your boundaries are, Tim.
Yeah, it's basically homeowners association is applied land. It's a subdivision owned by a certain corporation and they are paid, the people living in that subdivision pay a dues to have certain items done for them.
But if they own, if they own property, they get notified?
They should have.
So, we're asking for two notifications?
Correct.
They should get both, then we make sure that they are all attending.
That's, yes, that's certain.
Just wondering if that's really in our purview.
Well, it's in the motion, so.
I should ask, is the applicant okay with that? Who sends out the notices typically? This is my ignorance.
We're getting a couple of things confused. There is what's required by state law that the city does, we notify property owners. Those went out. Then there's also, we give as a city policy, we provide that list along with the name of the contact person for the neighborhood association that's recognized through our city's recognized neighborhood process to the developer to hold their own meeting, whether they send a postcard, a letter, or knock on everybody's doors, up to them. So, really what's being discussed tonight is the developer holding an additional developer meeting. It's completely independent of the city's notification.
And it sounds like a letter to you notifying the homeowners association and also a letter to the, head the neighborhood association about this meeting should suffice.
We have a list for the neighborhood association and I believe Hubbell has a list for their homeowners association. So, yeah, both lists, they will be responsible for the homeowners association and I'll make sure it gets out to the neighborhood association.
Here's how I see the issue. This is part of a very large PUD that was done by Clark back in the 90s. So, with you putting the additional restriction on to notify the HOA, you've just broadened the notification requirements per the zoning ordinance, okay? That's, that's kind of dangerous. I mean, as a developer, I look at that and say, well, you're going beyond what's in the ordinance. I don't know that I really care. The people we want to live in this facility are from this neighborhood, so we want them to be informed. I don't care, and I'm happy to invite the HOA as well as the neighborhood association to the meeting. It's going to be one meeting. We're going to invite both groups there, so everybody's there at the same time. But it is a little concerning that you're taking the PUD and saying, we're going to notify the HOA, because that just broadened a much larger geographical area than is required by the zoning ordinance.
I was under the understanding that that area that you're developing, even though it's not been zoned like it should be for a recreational area, that area there was supposed to be a recreational area for the HOA?
Absolutely not true. I've never heard that before. I'd like to see the documentation.
This is what a resident told me, and this is information that she received when she bought the house in the area.
She'd have to produce it, because I have never seen any information nor we ever made a representation. If that's going to be a park.
Well, that is the reason why I'm asking for the HOA to be there.
Yeah, I'd like to see the documentation.
I'll see if she still has hers, because she's lived there a few years now, so I'll see what I can do.
We have a motion. Does everyone understand the motion? All those, do we need to break it down, A and then B and C? Okay, let's try A first. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? One abstention?
Determination as to whether the proposed rezoning is in conformance with the Des Moines 2020 community character plan. We said yes. B and C, B is rezone the property from the existing PUD-planned unit development, River Woods, to a separate PUD-planned unit development, River Woods Terrace, with a new conceptual plan for use of the property. And C is approval of a conceptual plan for River Woods Terrace for a one-story residential complex with 70 beds for assisted living and memory care.
Everyone clear on that one? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? And one abstention. Okay.
CJ, did you abstain as well or did you?
Okay, so two absten-
Tim.
Tim's abstaining on everything. And so, nine, zero, one on A, eight, zero, two on B.
And B and C. We did B and C together.
You did those two together. Okay, excellent. All right, thank you.
Okay, we're through with item two. Item three is a request from Home, Inc., represented by Pam Carmichael, to rezone properties located at 1303 and 1305 Clark Street and 1512 and 1516 13th Street. The subject property is owned by the 61040th LLC, the City of Des Moines and Jack DeLeon Construction, Inc. Jason?
It's made up of a handful of parcel, existing parcels. It's intersection of Clark and 13th Street. This is conceptual layout showing duplex, single-family and then duplex. Conceptual building elevation for the duplex units. And then I have a drawing here. This is associated, well, if you can see it, hang on a second. There we go. This is associated with the staff recommendation, just identifying what the written recommendation is referring to with regard to windows and brackets. Elevation of the single-family dwelling. Photograph of the site. Looking down the alley, it intersects the site. And then north of the alley, just to kind of give you another feel of area. So, anyway, we have a couple of things going on here. This will be another one, where we'll have multiple parts or multiple motions. We are recommending approval. Right now, the land use plan does identify this as low-density. To get to that R3 to a lot of these duplexes and the small lot, single-family, we do need to amend the future land use plan. We think that a low-medium density in this area could work as long as we can, you know, agree on some conditions, the design, quality of design. We do have a couple of things that we'd like to see change. I know the applicant is agreeable to the staff rec, except with the exception of siding material. They're proposing a vinyl siding and we're recommending a cement board. So, with that, I'll just go ahead and run through the conditions. A, not finding any conformance. B, with the land use plan. B, revise the land use plan. And then part C, the actual rezoning. Permitted uses should be limited to single-family residential, single-family semi-detached and two-family residential. So, although it's a R3 zoning, be limited to these specific uses. So, not something that can be developed for larger-scale multifamily. Two is that we need to just make sure that we have the lots plotted out and recorded properly, not a big, big deal. Three, just compliance with the tree mitigation ordinance. That's just really calling something out that has to be met anyway. And then four, that any single-family dwelling shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the submitted design, subject to the following alteration, that it be constructed with the cedar or the, more realistically, the cement board, cement board lap siding. Five is that any two-family duplex dwelling shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the submitted design, subject to the following alterations. It should be constructed with, once again, the siding recommendation. And then B and C have to do with the addition of the window and brackets. And the applicant, as I understand it, is okay with that condition. Be happy to answer any questions. I know that Pam is in the audience and can speak to questions as well and kind of discuss their position on the siding, which revolves, of course, around cost, which always seems to, everything revolves around money, so.
Any questions for Jason? Thank you. Will the applicant please come up?
Good evening. I'm Pam Carmichael. I'm the director of Home Incorporated. My address is 1111 Ninth Street, Suite 210 here in Des Moines. I'd like to talk just a little bit about this project. We've been working on this project for about a year now, and we had worked with the neighborhood associations, both Mondamen Presidential and King Irving during the formation of this project. This project is what's called a permanent supportive housing project. It will provide rental, permanent rental housing for extremely and very low-income households with children. We are looking at a population that will be transitioning from the House of Mercy, which is about two blocks west of our site. Currently, House of Mercy has about 100 clients in there, women and children, who are working through personal issues that they may have, and they're formerly homeless women and children. And they go through supportive services there and then they move into private rental housing. Home, Inc. will act as the developer and the owner of this project. House of Mercy will provide the management of the units for us and the maintenance of the units, as well as continue to provide or allow access to supportive services to the women that are moving from the House of Mercy, the transitional housing facility there, to the permanent supportive housing. We have, as stated earlier, we have, the project calls for two duplexes and one single-family. All of them are three-bedroom. They range in size from 1,100 to 1,200 square, 1,000 to 1,200 square feet. They, we have about, we have amassed about $725,000 for this project through a number of sources. To date, we have committed community development block grant funding, federal home loan bank funding of $150,000, Polk County Housing Trust fund of $75,000, and Iowa Finance Authority home funds are pending right now of about $150,000. We hope to be able to, with these figure, with this amount of money, about $725,000 cost, we anticipate that we will be able to rent these units for $525 a month, which is significantly below fair market or tax credit rents in the city, because the clients that we will be serving will be very low-income women and their children. We worked with Mond, we went to Mondamen Presidential Neighborhood Association on February 20th and received their approval for this project. We had our own meeting, the same process that you heard earlier, where the city sent out the notices and we sent out a letter on March 1st of this year, and had five residents that came to that meeting. Two were representatives of the neighborhood associations and three were residents on Norton, which is right up here, I think, yeah, on Norton Avenue. At that time, two of the people in Norton Avenue were opposed to multifamily, even a duplex in this area. After working with them and addressing their concerns, we got a call this morning that they are supporting the project. And we will have letters of support from Mondamen Presidential as well as King Irving, which supported the project at their last meeting on March 8th. We are willing to, we've reviewed the staff recommendation and we are very willing to agree to some changes that they have in this project. This is the two-story. And this came through when we had our discussions. We're willing to put the braces here as the city has identified, and we're also willing to add another window down here to these units. The one thing, because of cost, we are very concerned about the requirement to use cement board siding. We anticipate that on these units, if we were to use seven-inch lap siding, which would not be consistent with the neighborhood actually, we'd need to use smaller, but we did get a bid on using seven-inch, and that would be $3,800 more per unit, which is about $20,000 for the whole project. And since we're trying to keep the units down, the cost down for the rents down, we may find that difficult to do. We did survey the neighborhood, sites around the neighborhood, excuse me, I have lots of paper here, and found some units that are in the neighborhood, close to where our units are, that are using, some of them are newer units, but we have, here's our project right here. And then we've identified a unit here, a unit here, and two units here, which have been constructed or remodeled recently. These are the addresses. It's 1511 13th, 1515 13th, 1330 Clark and 1327 Clark Street, that all have been built, or as I said, remodeled within the last year, all of which we think represent the character of the neighborhood very well, plus they also have vinyl siding on all these units. This is a single-family unit on 1511, which was built in 2008. This is one at 1515 13th, which was built in 2008. This is a new construction built at 1330 Clark, which is built in 2011, has vinyl siding. And this is a remodel that was done in 2010 using vinyl siding on 1327 Clark. I would be happy to answer any of your questions. I do have our architect here, Brent Shipper, is here if you have any specific questions. And then also our, Home, Inc. is a nonprofit housing organization. We've been in the community since 1967, and we have on our staff, we have, our construction manager is here tonight, and he has 32 years of experience in building new units and rehabbing units. Since about 1990, Home, Inc. has constructed 200 units, constructed or rehabbed 200 units of affordable housing in the city of Des Moines. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Jack?
Pam, can you just clarify, given your relationship with the House of Mercy?
The House of Mercy, Home, Inc. is the city's certified choudeau community housing development organization, which makes us eligible for certain types of funding. As that organization, we can own, develop, we can use those funds as the owner, the developer, or the sponsor of affordable housing projects. In this project, we are the owner, we will be the developer, and we will go into a contractual agreement with House of Mercy to manage the units for us and also to place the residents and provide supportive services. So, it will be a contractual agreement. So it will be a contractual agreement. The sources of funding that we have on here, these are all affordable housing units that we've received, affordable housing funds. They will require a commitment from Home Inc. of 20 years to keep these units affordable housing to low-income people. And at this point in time, we anticipate a long-term relationship with Mercy. However, for some reason, Mercy, we're not able to continue that. Home Inc. can provide supportive services. We do have that ability. But we have targeted these primarily for House of Mercy residents, knowing that many of the women, when they complete their program there, they stay much longer in the dormitory style living because they can't find a permanent affordable rental. And so we're trying to do this to address the need that we're seeing in the community.
And I'm not questioning the need or anything. I'm in my mind formulating whether I should abstain from the vote.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Tim?
Pam, what do you feel is the average turnover time for a normal tenant? Is it a year or?
Oh, no. It's, in this type of situation, we would expect, most time in permanent supportive housing, you see somebody staying in the unit from anywhere from one year to five years, and then they move on. The one thing about these units is that we will not allow Section 8 certificates in here, so if a client receives a Section 8 certificate, which a lot of our clients, we want them to do, they'll be able to move on into the open market, and this will open up for another resident of House of Mercy to come in. But the average time is about anywhere from a year to five years, which I think the average being about two years. The average length of time right now at House of Mercy is about 18 months, of which most women complete their, the work that they need to do after maybe a year, and are unable to leave simply because they can't find affordable housing. Many of them are there with their children.
Do they actually sign a formal lease with you?
Yes, they would sign a formal lease. And the other thing is, as a condition of receiving the money from the Federal Home Loan Bank, we will be, there will be supportive services. So if the women are receiving any types of services now from House of Mercy, they will continue to receive them, and most of them are. It could be anything from treatment services to healthcare services, daycare, job training, education, as well as mental health. If they're participating in those, all of the women that go in our House of Mercy have a supportive services agreement that they must succeed at if they're to graduate from House of Mercy.
Pam, I have another question. I'm understanding that Home Inc. intends on owning these properties for some time.
Yes.
Talk about that again, and tell me how long you anticipate ownership.
Well, we would anticipate ownership throughout the life of the project, which we would imagine would be 30 to 50 years, or a lot longer than that. They have to remain affordable housing for at least 20 years, and we will be involved. We know during the first 10. We have talked to House of Mercy about at some point in time taking over ownership of the units, but that's not feasible at this point. So Home Inc. sees a long-term commitment. And we've been in the community since 1967.
Mike?
Could you summarize again your issues with staff report? Is it only the siding?
It is only the siding, yes.
And is staff is recommending something like a hardy siding or?
Yes, hardy plank, yes.
Okay. I can say as an architect, hardy siding or cement board siding is one of the best things to come along. It is expensive, but it is incredibly durable.
Yes, I'm aware of that. We've used it in some of our projects where we have a little bit higher cost point.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience to speak in favor of the project? Anyone to speak against the project? Then I'll close the public hearing and look for a motion, and I think we probably have to do this, A, and then B and C. Ted?
Well, just, Jason, is there, is there, is there some sort of administrative approval thing that could happen where they can, where you can discuss maybe some alternatives from a cost standpoint that might afford them the ability to use the hardy plank because they've made a compromise somewhere else?
Sure. What we're talking about is conditions. This is just zoning. So if not, if we didn't have a zoning condition that mandated a specific material, there's no reason why any material, I mean, any material would be allowed unless it's specifically prohibited. So, you know, there's always opportunity to address it down the road, just with conversation or whatever.
I'm not quite sure how to write, how to make the motion, I think I just discussed, but, do you have any ideas, Mike?
Yeah, I would move staff, subject to staff working with the applicant on alternatives to the exterior materials.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
Thank you, Mike. Ted? Any discussion? We're going to do A. I'm assuming that's for everything, moving everything, Mike? Ted? Okay, we'll do A first.
Shouldn't we have a discussion first?
Sure.
I would vote no on this typically, except in this instance for the fact that Home Inc. has been around for a very long time and has developed a very good reputation and is in their best interest to put their and the neighborhood's best foot forward. And so I will vote yes with trust that I have for Home Inc. and Pam Carmichael's agency.
Any other discussion? If we're going to vote on A, those in favor of A, raise your right hand, please.
We're voting no.
Yeah, we're in favor of staff, which is no. Right. Those opposed? Same sign? Okay, that passed. We're going to vote for B and C, which is, B is the amendment to the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan to revise the existing future land use designation from low-density residential to low-medium density residential. And C is rezone the property from our 161 family low-density residential district to limited R3 multiple-family residential district to allow for development of two small lot, two-family dwellings, and one small lot, single-family dwelling.
May I just make a point clear? As I understand the motion, instead of having the hard requirement that we use cement board, that the language be changed, that we work, explore options with the developer with the hopes of finding a siding material that's appropriate.
That's not quite hardy plank.
It's, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question. I wanted to clarify. All three neighborhoods that touched this project have approved of it. Is that correct?
It sounds like from Pam's presentation, we don't attend those meetings, that they've, she's?
Yeah, but are cards required to mail on this, or do we not have any, or?
We don't have, and I want to, I'm glad you brought that up. I want to clarify that the staff with the cards has to do with the automated return, like our renewal with the post office. The notices were mailed, cards were sent out, people got their notice. We will get the cards. It's just a administrative thing with the post office, so.
Questions?
Did I three neighborhoods approve? I believe you said that you went to, there's two neighborhoods impacted.
Two neighborhoods, King Irving and Mondamen Presidential. Both did support, and I do not have letters from them yet, but they did take votes to support the project. And we've also been working with both the neighborhoods on the concept of support housing for almost a year now.
But Pam, didn't you state that there were a couple of neighbors on Morton that were, were objecting to it, but you said that they're going to meet, and you will bring us some documentation or submit it?
No, they, and I can get a letter from her, but they came to our public hearing on March 1st, and then they also attended the King Irving Neighborhood Meeting, and at both meetings, they expressed concern about the project. I got a call today from one of the residents who was, it's a mother-in-law and her daughter-in-law, a mother-in-law, yeah, and she said that she had talked to some other neighborhood residents. There were some issues they had with House of Mercy, just a couple of them, and it had to do with an area that they have across the street from House of Mercy where the women go to smoke because they can't smoke on the Mercy property. And that has since been taken care of by Mercy, so they are more than happy for us to move forward. And she also said that she'd be willing to work with us on anything that we needed to do on the project. We did have one woman that was there that lived on Norton who supported the project because she's lived next door to House of Mercy now for 15 years and never had a problem. So, yeah. We believe we've addressed the neighborhood issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Can we vote now on B and C, please? All those in favor of the motion, B and C, raise your right hand. Opposed? Nobody's opposed, Jason. Okay, item three is taken care of. Thank you. Go on to our last item, which is item five, which is request from Baker Real Estate LP, represented by Bernice Baker, partner to amend the Baker PUD on property in the vicinity of 4500 Hubble Avenue to revise development on parcels. B and C to increase the number of permitted multifamily residential units from 180 to 210, and to remove the required brick exterior materials, replacing them with cement board materials.
There, members of the commission, you should have received an updated staff report that's sitting at your desk. This is noted in the original, original staff recommendation that went out with a packet. We were expecting some revisions based on some meetings that we've been having, and so we punted. And so, but now we've got revised drawings, and so we did send that out, and we do, we are recommending approval of some conditions. This is an aerial identifying the property along Hubble Avenue. Just a general photograph of the area. The sign, there's a couple of billboards, they are part of the site, and they're going to be removed. This is, this is the layout. The general layout, this is an approved project, so we're not, we're not talking about a new project, what we're talking about is some additional units and some change in siding material. So I'm going to try to hone my presentation kind of around those two things with regard to, you know, this being here, putting PUD zoning in place, that's kind of, that's past this. But just to get everybody familiar with the parcel within the PUD that we're talking about, it's parcel B, which has their first phase, they're looking to do just one building initially if they get their tax credits. And then there's C, there's also buy attached and some additional undeveloped, and then their Baker Office facilities within its PUD. So we have the drive, we have parking, we have the three buildings with their sides, the Hubble, and then the three buildings in the back. Just a close-up showing that layout. And let's see, here we go. This is the elevation. All six of the buildings would match up with this elevation. Initially, what's on the books, what was approved, was 60% brick, or essentially the first two floors of all six buildings. You know, historically, as we've had apartment projects come forward, multifamily, we've looked to include masonry, 60%, it's been a number that's been used. You know, it's both aesthetic, it's also a durability issue, you know, on the lower levels. This was submitted initially, and this actually shows just cement board siding, and I believe that applicant's got some larger drawings that'll show up a little better. But since we had some meetings, as I alluded to, we did get a revision from the applicant. And I apologize that it's not showing up very well, but what they are proposing to do initially, like I said, what was on the books was the first two floors of every building were to be masonry. They ran into some financing concerns, so they initially proposed no masonry since our meeting. The submitted elevation that shows a wainscoting below the first level windows on all the buildings, so that's at 2 feet 8 inches. The ends that face Hubble would have, well, actually, this drawing, excuse me, this drawing shows the wainscoting, but in talking with applicant prior to the meeting, their position is evolving as well, and I won't, I'll let them speak to that, just so we don't get terribly confused. But where, where staff is, is we do believe that there's room to compromise. We think that there's some priority areas within the site that we believe should be the focal points of where masonry should go. And those are the three buildings that front Hubble. What we're recommending is that the first floors of all the sides of these buildings have the, have the masonry on the ground floor and the entrance bumpouts. I'm not sure how well you can pick up on this aerial here, but in your packet, we have a couple of spots, you know, this is what we're considering entrance. So masonry on the ground, and then, probably. Well, I would have liked to believe, yeah, I hoped it did, but anyway, you're just going to have to take my word for it. Just believe me. So, anyway, so our recommendation is to, on those three buildings, go with the first floors and then those entrance areas on those, on the buildings. The rest of the buildings, we're okay with what they're proposing. So I know they have an alternative, and even before the meeting, there was an alternative material that they're looking at, that they want to discuss with you. So I'm not going to try to speak for them. I'd rather just let them come up and explain what they hope to do. So if you have any questions for me, be happy to answer them.
Questions for Jason? Thank you. Will the applicant come up? Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, my name is William Lilis. My address is 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300. I'm appearing as, with my partner Joel Templeman, Chalk Bishop, Bishop Engineering, and Pierce Cody from Simons and Associates are here this evening. As Jason has indicated, we agree with the staff recommendation, the points, the only difference we have has to do with the limitations, or frankly, the imposition of the question of brick on the first floor of the three buildings.
Jason, can you help me with getting this focused in? Where are you going? Give me that. There we go. Okay, thanks. The, as Jason mentioned, the project you've seen before, we are asking for modification as to numbers of units. Candidly, the buildings are the same, locations are the same, but because of the requirements, the financial requirements of Iowa Finance Authority or IFA, we're under what we believe to be, we know to be, very, very restrictive provisions. So what you had seen before dealt with much more brick than we would be able to do economically in order to meet the requirements of IFA. So it's, it is a cost item. So what we originally proposed, and we've talked with staff several times, was the hardy plank, the no-brick with hardy plank only. We've come back with, after discussion, what Jason alluded to and Pierce Cody from Simons and our architect associates can speak to, is a wainscoting, I guess is what you call it, but brick 2.8 inches, whatever, on all sides of the three buildings. The three buildings are perpendicular to Hubble. And those of you who know the site know that Hubble runs, of course, at an angle. It'd be this building, this building, and this building. So they are the buildings, and the ends, of course, would be, almost be, as you drive up and down Hubble, the front. So what has been suggested by staff is to, rather than two floors of brick material, that you have one floor of brick material. But you can imagine if we had brick material on the first floor of all of these buildings, lineal footage, and you do it all around, we have said that candidly, we can't agree with that staff recommendation. What we have shared briefly with staff today, and I'll let Pierce Cody speak to this because...
briefly with staff today, and I'll let Pierce Cody speak to this because he can speak much more intelligently, and I don't want to take any architectural license, particularly with all the architects in the room, but there's a product that has been used in Des Moines that looks like brick. It's a particular process. It's apparently, in layman's terms, as I understand it, a hardy plank, although I think that's a brand name. It's a cement-type of a project... a product that looks like brick. And we would be agreeable to... if the commission would agree, to having that product put on the first floor of all three buildings. So, these three buildings, and that is... So, we'd have hardy plank or that type of a product where you have it siding, and then we would have this other product, which looks like brick on the... all of the sides of the first floor. Pierce has even a sample of what it looks like. He's brought with him. I'd welcome questions that you might have now, but... or defer to questions on later time. We did have a staff... excuse me, a neighborhood meeting. There is no designated neighborhood in this area. There are three people that appeared on March 8, and they had no objections to our request. So, the really... I think the only open issue, ladies and gentlemen, is this question of the material, and Pierce can speak to that. Any other questions of us? We'll be happy to try to answer them. Okay, Pierce?
Thank you, Bill. As Bill said, my name is Pierce Cody. Work for Simonsen and Associates, 1717 Ingersoll Avenue here in Des Moines. As we've looked at this product, or as we've looked at this project, and knowing that the cost caps that IFA has modified from last year to this year, it's been a real struggle to try and find a way to make these things cost affordable and ultimately serve the need for senior community in our... this portion of the city. We had proposed this product to Mike Ludwig last week. It is not the same as thin brick. It is, as Bill suggested, a fiber-cement panel that, rather than having, for example, a wood texture embossed in it, in this case, has a brick texture embossed in it. It goes on in panels. It's lapped, so it sheds water, and it's quite durable. In fact, it holds a longer warranty than the hardy plank material. This product manufactured by a company called Nichiha has a 50-year guarantee. The hardy products have a 30-year guarantee. So, frankly, durable, quite frankly. With that, one project that I can definitively point you to that has used this product, this Nichiha product on a multifamily project here in town, is just west of the Drake Campus. Hubble has developed a student apartment complex probably three years ago, I would say, and they use a lot of this product. Some of it looks like brick, some of it looks like architectural precast, some of it looks like CMU. So, if you happen to be driving by that building, you might just take a look and see if you think that what you thought might have been brick, or stone, or CMU really isn't in this case. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions about the product, if there are any.
Questions?
I have a question. How long has this company been in business? Have they been making this product?
This company... James Hardy is out of Canada and has been in business, I know, well over 20 or 30 years. I don't know specifically off the top of my head how long Nichiha's been in business, but I believe it's probably of a similar duration because I believe that this product originally originated in Japan and has come to this country.
Okay. The reason I ask is, is a 50-year warranty, that sounds good.
Sure.
But, if the company's not there to stand behind it, it's zero good.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
I have a question.
That's true.
So, what you're proposing to do is meet the staff's recommendation with this product instead of masonry?
Yes, because the cost between the hardy board lap siding and this product is very similar, whereas brick is many, many times more expensive. And we can do a story of this material within our budget, we believe. We haven't costed it. As we've said, this project's been in flex, but we think that we can do that. And so, we would meet staff's recommendation to bring this up to that first floor and then up those entry elements.
On the sides just facing...
Actually, I believe all sides.
And so, no more wainscoting? Now, you're going one story up?
Correct.
So, it's an improvement beyond?
Yes.
I have a question, then. Jason mentioned that on the entryway, there would be... the cities had discussed adding brick on the second and the third floor of the entryway.
And we would do that as well.
You would do that as well.
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant, Tim?
I have one. It's in regards to the... I think the city council took up this very issue with the Hampton Inn, brick versus this. It's my opinion, or it's not my opinion, but I heard that this product is better than what was presented to the Hampton Inn project. And I just... I can't remember what was the resolve.
We could... we could... It definitely is a different product.
That was thin brick.
Yes.
Okay. Tell us the difference between thin brick and this product.
I'll give you a very short definition. Thin brick is literally a thin ceramic product that is applied into some matrix, whether it be a concrete panel or a stucco bed of some kind. And so, it acts almost more like a tile than it does a brick. It doesn't have the full depth of a brick. This material is designed to be put on in sheets. It actually stands out away from the wood framing of the building behind it to allow any incidental moisture that comes into the system to weep out at the bottom. So, it's really designed to take care of that water. Water management is always the issue with these kinds of products. And as I think Phil would attest to, detailing thin brick is art and a science project at the same time, so...
So, there's some kind of furring material that you apply this to, as it were, to bring it out against?
Yes, there's an actual clip that these panels are attached to that stands it out away from the sheathing.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Unless you have any other questions, ladies and gentlemen, I don't think we'd have anything else. We urge staff recommendation as amended, and we recognize that's not in writing, but I think hopefully, we've clarified that. But, if you have any questions as to what we do, we would do the first floor with the product we're talking about, plus the end, as suggested by staff.
Any other questions for Bill?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience to speak in favor of the project? Anyone to speak against the project? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Move staff as amended for materials as presented.
Okay. We have a motion? Any discussion?
I just like... how did the... what was the resolve the city council with Hampton Inn? I don't recall it.
Mr. Lilis?
The thin brick was approved, yeah. So, you know, the problem with that is really how it's applied, is kind of what the discussions were evolved around.
But they're okay with the fob. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion? From CJ? From CJ? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed? Mike's abstaining. Okay, thank you very much. We added Jack.
I got it.
You snuck in. I really don't know that we can have a discussion. We don't have a director. We haven't had R and O, so I'm going to do this. We're adjourned.